This Lacy City Council meeting on February 20th at 6:00 PM. And if you're able, just for the record, all councils here in present, if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We, the city of Lacy, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nsquali Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have an approved agenda and consent agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is our Lacy Youth Council reports.
For those of you who don't know, I'm Eliana, and tonight I am representing Pope John Paul II High School. In the past month, JP2 has celebrated Catholic Schools Week, completed our winter sports seasons, and taken part in many other types of extracurricular competitions and celebrations. Our basketball teams finished out the season with the girls going to districts for the second time in a row, and our chess team qualified for state competition. On top of that, a large portion of the student body competed in the Future Business Leaders of America Winter Business Leadership Conference. Nearly all of our members qualified for state, and we even had multiple first and second place wins. On the performance side of things, that I am personally very involved in, our JP2 jazz band participated in a local high school jazz festival, and the choir celebrated our second year going to the Archdiocese of Seattle Catholic Choir Festival, where we performed under the direction of New York composer and director Francisco Nunez. Our drama club has also begun rehearsals for our performance of the War of the Worlds radio broadcast. We also took time this year to celebrate Black History Month with a friend of the school, Mr. Carlson, coming in and talking to our US history classes about the Black Panther Movement, and then he later talked to the entire school about what it means to be both Black and Catholic. As we move ever forward, JP2 has also recently done our Take Flight Breakfast, a fundraising event aimed specifically at raising money for financial assistance for our families. This was a huge success despite having to start late due to the snow, though one day it snows. Overall, we have had an incredibly successful and active month and cannot wait for what lies ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Rory Ramirez, and I will represent North Hurston High School. Last weekend, our best band, orchestra, and choir students went to Yakima for a statewide performance/competition called Allstate Northwest. And many of our students placed, however, in my opinion, I think it's a really great achievement even just to go there. It's a really big event, and you learn a lot from attending. And in other news, North Hurston High School is hosting a Tolo dance, otherwise known as a Sadie Hawkins dance, where the girls invite the boys. And the Future Business Leaders of America at North Hurston High School had a Winter Business Leader Conference, and many of our students placed first and qualified for state, including our mayor Sarah and clerk Eliana here at the youth council. The yearbook is on track for a timely production, meeting its third deadline and well onto the fourth. And finally, the girls and boys basketball team is undefeated in conference and headed to state. That's all. Thank you.
Call Rams.
Hello. My name is Rory Line. I am representing Timberline High School. To start things off, our dance team went to Nationals in the past week. They went down to California. Our boys' basketball team has made it to state, and our girls' basketball team are now doing playoffs to see if they make it to state. Timberline hosted the winter FBLA conference, and a few of our members also went to state. Our musical is The Addams Family, which I am involved in, and so is Nathaniel. It's three weeks away from opening night. Our cultural awareness club is now starting practice for dance practice for the Cultural Awareness Assembly, which is closer to, let's say, it's further on in the year. And we had a lockdown recently that a few of you might know about, with a recycled photo of a person in the school bathroom with a weapon. Thank you.
I am Nathaniel Clay, and I am here to do the Lacy Youth Council report. On our first meeting on February 6th, we took a tour of Joint Animal Services, learning how they work and how they work in tandem with the city and neighboring jurisdictions. In today's meeting, we talked about the new stipend program, and we are continuing our planning of the Lacy Youth Summit, which is taking place on March 16th, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the South Sound Community College Lacy campus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Appreciate it, and I look forward to that first youth summit, and I'll be there to support you for sure. So next up on our approved agenda is a public comment. We had two written public comments. We have one person who's signed up here for public comment. How about you? Do you want to come up first? And then we have one person on Zoom.
Hi, everyone.
Yeah. Just please introduce yourselves and keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay. So my name is Hallie Eckmeyer. I'm a college student in IT, and I will probably be a recurring audience member from here on out, trying to be more politically active, so you could say, or, you know, sort of like an advocate in some way. And so I just kind of wanted to, like, properly introduce myself to the council. And I think I think I'll just start with this. I just kind of want to express my advocacy for maybe revisiting minimum parking requirements in the city, and because I would personally like to be closer to amenities, and I think that is a way for residents to be closer to, like, grocery stores and stuff like that. And so maybe in the next couple of years, or even this year, I don't really know when it would be revisited or which commission would revisit it. I'm still learning how all this works, but yeah, that's about it.
Well, thank you very much. And I usually don't, we usually don't interact, but since you asked the question, we're about ready to go through a major comp plan, and that's when you would be involved in talking about that issue or any other issue facing Lacy. And so there will be opportunities for you to be involved in our comp plan, and we look forward for you to be involved in our comp plan.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're going to actually start having a visioning process for our comp plan rollout and how we interact with our community and everything else, and that's coming up in a work session here pretty quick. So if you're going to be coming to our meetings, you'll learn all about that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice to meet you, too.
And we did have one person sign up for Zoom, but the last I heard, they haven't come in. So with that, is there anyone else wishing to address this council? No? Okay. Then next up on our agenda is, under ordinance, ordinance 1656, for the criminal impersonation. Matt?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I'm Matt Sharp, Assistant City Attorney, and I'm one of the prosecutors for the city as well. And through the course of my daily work, came across another dusty corner of the code that could use a fresh update. In this instance, we're talking about an ordinance from 1978 declaring the crime of criminal impersonation as a gross misdemeanor. Turns out, the law's evolved a bit around us since then. With the state law, the conduct that's described under the current statute in Lacy, that qualifies as a felony. So if someone were to engage in that sort of conduct, it would qualify as a felony under state law, a misdemeanor under city law. There's a little bit of a discrepancy there. Practically speaking, that would go to the county prosecutors as a felony, so functionally, the Lacy Code isn't doing much in that area right now. So when that change happened with the state law making that a felony, it was split apart into a first degree and second degree, and a second degree set of conduct is described there that's currently not captured by the Lacy Municipal Code. And so this ordinance that's proposed would capture that behavior, allow local prosecution of criminal impersonation as described under the amendment. So it's a fairly straightforward matter, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would move to adopt ordinance 1656, amending section 9.32.020 of the Lacy Municipal Code related to criminal impersonation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I did have one question. I noticed in there it only specified police and military. At least that's what it seemed to be specifying. Is there any other areas that we should be considering for this, like first responders, EMTs, fire? I didn't know if police and military were enough.
Well, thank you for that question. That's a good one. The first degree felony conduct would capture those sort of identities if the conduct were used in the way that's described there. But for the second degree, no, those aren't included. Whether they should be or not is a question for council. If council wants to take that route, we could look at revising and bringing something else forward.
I mean, up till now, obviously, this hasn't really come before us, and we haven't had to deal with it because we probably haven't had any sort of prosecutions under this section. All right? Is this something the chief sees as an issue in our community?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, potentially, definitely. We need to address the felony section because we did have felonious conduct recently where someone actually pretended to be me and defrauded one of our residents at about $5,000 off a telephone call. So that was definitely felonious behavior that we want to capture as the felony. But this ordinance seeks to do is to get the low-level behavior where you might have a security guard who appears to look like a police officer and may be acting in that capacity inappropriately. So we've had some similar incidents to that in recent past. We want to address that.
Okay. And what about the deputy mayor's question about, do you think we need to expand this further? Or do you have an opinion on that?
I haven't seen the need for that at this time.
Okay. Councilmember?
How would this apply? I get the impersonated law enforcement, but if someone told you a sign that says, "I'm a veteran, you know, give me money," are we, does that, where are the kind of boundaries of that? Because there's a lot of gray area that I could see.
Sure. That is a good question. It's a tough one, too. It would be handled on a case-by-case basis. That would come down to an evidentiary analysis by law enforcement as well as our office as to whether a case could proceed. I take it you're kind of asking, where would the bright line be? A lot of times...
Yeah, a little ambiguity there. I mean, it's very clear you're personally an officer, you know, you pull someone over, you pretend to be the chief, but someone just saying, "Oh, I'm a veteran." Give me stuff. I'm, you know...
Or sometimes you see veteran parking only, and if someone's not actually a veteran and they're in that parking, does that mean? Would we approach that in that way?
Sure. So unfortunately, in the criminal law, we don't always have bright lines, and things are analyzed in a totality of the circumstances, and this would have to be that, case by case. It's hard to say hypothetically without more specifics about the general...
Circumstances?
Yeah, the totality of what's happening in a given case. That could be, something like that could be, if there's accompanying evidence.
Yeah. Or I guess especially if someone is impersonating a veteran to receive dollars, and they're actually not a veteran, more like, you know, give to this fund because for veterans, but it's not happening that way, that maybe that's how this would be applied?
Well, to clarify, the language would call for intent to defraud for the purpose of personal gain or to facilitate unlawful activity. So that probably would narrow it for you, I would hope.
Yep, yep. Councilmember?
I might be wrong, but isn't there, I think there's actually federal law as far as impersonating, stolen valor law, right? If you're impersonating or claiming military service that you didn't actually do.
I think they actually made that unconstitutional.
What's that?
I think they made that unconstitutional, or you can't punish somebody for that.
Oh, really?
Freedom of speech.
Yeah, when I read it, I immediately, I don't know why I immediately thought this, but I immediately thought, you know, of an emergency scene where somebody, you know, "Oh, I'm an EMT," or "I'm a first responder," and they're not. And consequently, somebody dies, you know, because somebody's impersonating an EMT person or whatever the case may be. It was just a thought at the time, and I was like, man, is this wide enough of a scope or is it not? And so I'm not here to, you know, push us into rewriting all of this. It was just kind of one of those, and we probably haven't had a whole lot of circumstance and situation to warrant such a thing, just like we didn't have a whole lot of circumstance and situation to warrant, you know, people protesting our new police facility. But it just came to my mind, and I thought, you know, if somebody was, you know, impersonating an EMT or an emergency responder, that could be catastrophic as well.
Well, I'd say we probably just need to leave it up to our police department to monitor this, and if they think there is reasons that we need to expand this, then I'd make sure it comes up the proper channels, and we'll address it at that point. Agreed.
I would say just because you get pulled over doesn't mean you're going to get a ticket or your car towed, or if there's a murder, it doesn't mean that you're going to actually be charged for murder, to be downgraded. I think we have to have faith in all the branches of government here and have, you know, judicial knows what the charge and whatnot to, and so on and so forth.
Okay. Was there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 1656 for criminal impersonation. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. So next up on our agenda is, under the mayor's report, I have one action item, which is to appoint Chad Carpenter to the LTAC committee. Just a little background, Chad Carpenter has been on our LTAC committee for several years. He actually ended up taking another job, which then he wasn't qualified to be on our LTAC committee, but then found back in a position where he then qualified by working for an LTAC-funded, which was part of the requirement, and so I was able to reappoint him back on the LTAC committee. And it was kind of a weird process, but at the end of the day, Chad's been really great for our LTAC committee. Do you want to say anything on Chad's behalf there, since you're the chair of the LTAC committee?
He does a good job of studying his material and knowing what we're getting into every time. And so he was also kind of instrumental in, you know, helping us get the new rubric up and going. Not as instrumental as our assistant city manager, but he's a good appointee.
Okay. So with that, it's my motion that we appoint Chad Carpenter to the LTAC committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And then that motion unanimously carries. Next up is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item on the city manager's report, and it's the state legislative update, and I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Shannon Kelly-Fong, as well as Brian Enzil, here to present what's happening in their current short session.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Like the city managers mentioned, we are here to provide an update on the 2024 legislative session. For some background, as you all know, it is a short session, so it is what I would consider a sprint, and we've already gone through a couple of pretty significant benchmarks. Brian here told me before we started that today is day 44, which means that we are two-thirds of the way through the session. Through those previous 44 days, and even before that, the city has been advocating for its priorities, which were adopted by the Lacy City Council back in December, as well as making sure to be vocal about impacts on bills as they move through the legislature. As part of this, we have been meeting with the delegation, both, you know, sometimes virtually as well as on the Capitol, and talking about those priorities, and also again about some of those bills that impact the city. And most recently, we've had a few supplemental budget proposals that were just released, and so we want to talk a little bit about what's in them tonight, and then have a check-in on a few bills. And then Brian's here to answer any questions you might have on any additional bills or just broadly about the session itself. or just broadly about the session itself. So turning to the supplemental budgets, I think something really important that we wanted to highlight was a lot of the priorities that we are working on. We've spent this session, like I mentioned, meeting with our legislators and also meeting with our regional partners to lay a really good foundation and really hoping that we can continue that momentum moving forward in future sessions with some of those priorities. And specifically, I'm talking about our Regional Training Center request, which was our top priority. When we looked through the supplemental operating budgets, we found that both in the Senate and the House, there wasn't any funding for this specifically. But this is again, something that we want to continue to build our momentum in future years. A couple of things that I did want to highlight that was found in the draft operating budgets with the Senate, you can see that there was some additional funding for the existing Balia Regional Academies, but not for expanding into additional academies. They also have some language in there that would shift funding that was going to Skagit County to Snohomish County to join with Pasco and Clark County. And the House budget found very similar language shifting from Skagit to Snohomish County. And then also additional funding for a study for Kitsap County for either a Balia or a correctional academy. And so there was fifty thousand dollars for this study. In the Capitol budget, there was some limited funding in the Senate budget for the Lacey Training Center. We also wanted to highlight that there was some money for Tombwater for gopher mitigation. This is something that the City of Tombwater and the regional partners have been working on for a very long time and something we're going to continue to take a look at moving forward. There was also additional funding for the Defense Communities Compatibility Account for funding for school. And so Councilmember Greenside, I see you have a question.
Yeah, just a quick one. Limited funds for Lacey training, do we know that, is there a number to that limited funds?
Yeah, so as proposed, it's fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
And in the House, there were no priorities funded. Like I mentioned previously, and I will continue to mention, we think we laid a really good foundation this session and we are hopeful to continue the momentum moving forward in future sessions. Just wanted to check in on a couple of bills. And the reason I put this slide on here is not to go over the details of everything because that would be impossible from this distance, but really just to show the ways that we track and monitor all of the bills. And the other way that we track and monitor is sitting right to my left, and that is Brian Enzil, who is on the Hill, living this day in and day out. And we couldn't do this without Brian, so I just want to send my appreciation to Brian and also to our city staff who are very diligent on responding to bills as they come up. We know especially in this session, you have to be very swift and they have been very helpful in the bills that I'm going to go over and then in a lot of bills that you're not going to see tonight. When we first started putting this presentation together, we had a few more bills. But as we have progressed through the session, we have a few less bills. So the first bill I just wanted to get some feedback from the council on is sixty-eighty-nine, which is concerning electrical inspectors. And this would eliminate minimum requirement equivalencies for electrical inspectors. So basically, it would eliminate the ability to have two years of electrical training and then also four years, with four years of practical electrical experience and four years of electrical training and two years of practical electrical experience. We recommend opposing this as it could limit future candidate pools for inspector positions. And we know that inspector positions across the board are oftentimes positions that we have a difficulty filling. And so we would welcome any, you know, ways to get into this field. So we are seeking just some kind of nod of approval that this is in alignment with the council's philosophy.
Yeah. What's the idea behind this? Is that they're having unqualified electrical inspectors out there?
This is agency requests legislation from Labor and Industries and they feel like to some extent it is some cleanup and that these are pathways that are rarely used. But there have been arguments brought up that candidates potentially have not appropriate qualifications through these pathways. I think we would disagree and think, given the current high iron climate, it doesn't make sense to eliminate any pathways irrespective of how often they're used or not.
Yeah, I agree. I think practical experience is way more important than classroom experience most of the time anyway. So yeah, I agree. Where's the council? Yeah?
Great, fantastic. Thank you. The second bill that we have is on traffic safety cameras. And we recognize first and foremost that the city doesn't currently use traffic safety cameras. But we wanted to bring this bill to your attention, see if there's any feedback on this. And so we have it marked as a discussion item only. And so really, this would allow for the use of traffic safety cameras in work zones as well as a pilot for intersections and crosswalk violations. It would authorize civilian employees to run these programs. There would be a possibility for a reduction for recipients of state public assistance. And it would also restrict the use of revenue for traffic safety purposes. We don't have a recommendation, but we just wanted to see if the council wanted us to weigh in on this or if we wanted just to continue to monitor this.
I think we should just continue to monitor it since it's not directly involved in Lacey. Obviously, I was against having traffic cameras in Lacey, if you, if this council remembers right, so.
I removed them several as we were about to-
Yeah, yeah. And so I think we should just monitor this for now. And I'm up for other discussion, though.
Actually, back on the previous item, when we talked about removing those pathways, is Ellen, are you suggesting that they're incurring additional cost for these pathways that they feel like they shouldn't be incurring? Or is it expensive for them? Or is there some logic behind why they want to eliminate pathways other than potential cost? I'm not understanding why they want to do it.
I don't think the issue of cost has ever come up. I do think there have been, the conversation around qualifications has been the primary thrust behind it as well as just from their perspective, cleaning up statute that may or may not be needed.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a question on this one. I thought we already had that, the ability, I mean, we had them at one point in Lacey and we removed them. So I'm not sure I understand what this legislation is for.
It's the civilian employees, so that's the difference.
That's the difference?
Yeah. You had to have a police officer.
It had to be enforced by law enforcement before, right? Okay. So that's the real difference.
And that was one of the many issues with that. I mean, the people monitoring it wasn't even, weren't even from the state. So we're having people, you know.
Well, yeah, in some circumstance, and here you had to have a police officer sitting there and looking at all this stuff and not on the job.
I feel like there'd be overwhelming public unsupport or disapproval of this. So I fear that by not at least taking some sort of stance, and this is just my opinion, we risk that we stay on the sideline and eventually it ends up getting there for something that. So if no one's saying the opposite, those people who are trying to push this more likely to get-
We still wouldn't have to do it in Lacey, though.
And I understand that, but that could change at any moment just based on. So if we're not saying, hey, this is against our values, it's just, like I said, my opinion, but I'd be against it.
So would this bill, would it be up to individual jurisdiction to decide if they would do it or not? Is that, or?
Correct. And just quickly on the prior conversation, you were both right. This bill reauthorizes an existing authority that was set to expire. So we did have it, or cities did have this as an option, but they were set to expire. So this puts them back in place. And to the mayor's point, there is new policy here that allows you to use, like non-commissioned officers, you don't have to have a police officer reviewing this footage if you were to choose to use this program. And then lastly, to the most recent question, it is optional. It's an option for, if this bill were to pass, this would be an option that a city can choose to use or choose not to.
So if it doesn't pass, the cities that do still have cameras are going to have to take them down? Because there are still cities in Washington using them, correct?
That's my understanding.
Lakewood, I think, too.
Yeah, Lakewood has them. I know they do.
Brian, can you explain the twenty-five percent reduction for recipients of state public assistance? What does that mean?
It's an opportunity for you to reduce the fine for individuals that by this metric are low-income.
We don't want this.
We don't? Yeah, I mean, I'm not in favor of this either.
No, we removed him in Lacey because we weren't, because we opposed it, yeah.
Yeah, it feels like he's just sprinkling like little feel-good nuggets on it just to be like, hey, let's, if we do this, if we do this, we do this. It's just, oh, it worries me.
It sounds as if the City of Lacey is not in favor of this.
Well, thank you, council. I appreciate the discussion and the direction. Finally, I just wanted to provide the opportunity to check in on any bills that you all might have seen come up and to ask Brian questions and, you know, voice any concerns. And so I'll turn it over to you all to see if there's anything that you all wanted to check in on.
What's the rent regulation?
House Bill two-one-one-four is in the Senate. It is in Senate Ways and Means Committee, so it is still alive. It sets a statewide cap on rent increases at seven percent annual and no rent increase within the first twelve months of signing the lease. There are other provisions within the bill in its current form around, like how much you can charge for late fee, when you can charge for late fee, security first and last, that to the extent that Lacey has adopted tenant protections. And I actually don't know the answer to that and I apologize. I shouldn't have stumbled into that. But there might be some places where there's some interactions locally. But primarily, the main policy in the bill is a seven percent annual cap on rent increases.
Is that seven percent down from ten? I thought it was ten.
There's no cap.
There's no cap?
So.
During COVID.
Yeah, there's, currently, individual cities are preempted by state law to take any sort of action relating to the regulation of rent. There is nothing at a statewide level. Perhaps you're thinking of Oregon and California, which have statewide laws for multifamily units fifteen years or older that have a base rate around five percent and then inflation on top of that up to ten percent. And I'm sorry if that was confusing. I know sometimes it's hard to do numbers verbally.
Doesn't it also require like a hundred-and-eighty-day notice on rent increases?
Above three percent, I believe, in its current form.
Is there a reason why they settled on seven percent? It just, it still seems very high.
I, right, it's the men's array of, like, what was the legislator thinking? It's not tied to an index or inflation, but politically, that's the number that they're at currently, is what I would say.
This, I think this is, we need a work session to discuss this a little bit further. I don't, I know, I have some problems with this out of the, yeah. I have some problems with this. I think there's some good things in it, but I'm not sure if I could support a hundred percent.
Just to clarify, council, we're not necessarily asking for an opposition support monitor. It was just more to get information and knowledge out. And that's what we're really, this part of the section of the presentation is just to say, are there bills that you're curious about? Do you have questions? And we'd be happy to answer them.
Because it'd be hard to get to a work session with the session being almost over. You know, I think it's, what, fourteen days?
And can you, what about the other two?
You know, we highlighted these on the slides because these are some of the biggest legislative items that the legislature broadly is discussing. But it may, you know, does not necessarily directly impact the City of Lacey from a city regulatory standpoint. So I mentioned the Transit Oriented Development Bill as our guest in the audience. This is something that has to do with, you know, developments around station areas and high-capacity transit, which, based on the definitions of the bill, do not exist in Lacey in this form. So we're thinking like, you know, light rail and other types of like bus rapid transit that have dedicated guideways and things of that nature. But very hotly contested in legislature and something that our community will see at some point in the future, perhaps. The Climate Commitment Linkage Bill is obviously a very robustly debated issue. There is an initiative that's been certified that will be on the ballot that will ask the voters whether or not they want to repeal the Climate Commitment Act. This bill directs the Director of Ecology to link our market with the California market and the Quebec market. I think the idea is that would drive the price of carbon credits in Washington State down and then therefore drive the price of gas in some way down as well prior to the election.
Any information on, I know there was some legislation regarding getting rid of natural gas. Where are they on that legislation?
There has been bills in prior sessions around allowing like developments in what you're developing, whether you can use heat pumps versus natural gas. This year, I was looking through my notes before we started and, you know, the biggest bill that's still alive is fifteen-eighty-nine, which is actually a Representative Doleo bill. And that's for, designed for Puget Sound Energy to help them create their own framework moving through time to move away from natural gas. And I think that's the biggest policy issue on that subject in front of the legislature currently. They're obviously wrestling with the question of how then to replace the power supply. And they're hoping for their own kind of flexibility to meet that mandate. So that's fifteen-eighty-nine, and that is still alive currently.
Thank you.
So what, what do you think, Brian? Is there anything else that we should be aware of? Obviously, you're living this all the time.
For sure. You know, we have, just quickly, a note on the budget. There is funding in both the House and the Senate proposals that came out that provide additional resources for Commerce. The House budget has more, and in this case, I think we like more, around seventy million additional for Commerce to work on, like the right-of-way proviso and other things that we've partnered with Commerce as well as we deal with the housing and homelessness crisis. The Senate budget's at a lower number. It's around, it's twenty in one pot and ten in another. So that's something that we're looking at. Obviously, we're disappointed, we have some level of disappointment with the Regional Training Academy and not getting operating funding. It would have created a real challenge. And in some ways, the silver lining to that is the idea, hopefully, next session, based on the work that we have done, that we would be ready to move forward with classes as our Capitol facility is ready and available instead of trying to do something in the interim. From the slide earlier, you can tell that this is, a lot of communities are involved. A lot of communities are interested in this. I continue to say that we are going to be better positioned because of the local resources that we've committed to this. And then on that note, a policy that is reflected in both budgets is that the state will go back to paying a hundred percent of the cost to train officers in the Basic Law Enforcement Academy.
That's good.
And I'm happy to do this offline, but Shannon would kick me under the table if I gave you the whole history of the Public Safety and Education Account and how it was our money to begin with. But like I said, happy to take that offline.
Okay. Counselor Vasquez?
Two questions. On House Bill fifteen-eighty-nine related to energy and it sounds like PSE trying to work with stickholders to figure out how to draw down their natural gas portfolio. Does the bill, I'm looking at it, but I haven't had a chance to really read it. Does the bill talk about rate increases? Because we did just get in a sort of an informational email about PSE requesting substantial rate increases to pay for the transition off of natural gas and toward more electricity and more energy-efficient sources.
You have officially stumped me this evening and I'll have to get back to you and I'll make sure that I share that, answer that question with Shannon and she'll get it out to the entire council. So great question, and I'm sorry that I wasn't able to answer it right now.
That's okay. It's just, I know that there is a separate process controlled by the Utilities Commission when rate increases are requested, but all of these things seem connected because in the message they sent out, they said, we're doing this because we have been told we need to shift away from natural gas. And so we need to have funding to be able to do that and develop our electrical grid. So I'm curious to see where this bill goes.
I think the email that we got when it got cold from PSE was telling in terms of just the struggle.
Yeah. One other question I had was about the, what is the right phrase, Rick? Single occupancy dwelling? The dormitory-style living zoning? The dormitory-style living zoning?
1988. Is that still alive? 1998. Yes, that is still alive. That is in the Senate. There had been some concerns about like utility hookups, but I believe that's been, or, or impact fees associated with the number of individuals, but I believe that's been taken out of the bill. And I, so that's the co-living bill is, is, and that would require that a city in zones where six, six multifamily units are allowed, that you also allow for like co-living, which is, think of it as like, like, like on a floor, you have like bedrooms, but a shared like kitchenette or living space. And so, so you wouldn't, so a city would not be able to prohibit that. So if a developer wanted to come in and build something like that in a place that's zoned multifamily with six units or more, then they could do that.
Yeah, I'm excited that that bill's still alive, just because it's better that we have more options for addressing our needs for housing. Thanks.
I agree. Anything else?
One quick thing.
Go ahead.
So the cities that are, are getting, or the jurisdictions that are getting these hydrogen hubs, Washington, Oregon, Idaho, are they getting a say on, in that? Or is, how's that, how does that work?
I actually don't know whether that, whether that triggers like essential public facilities or FSEC. I would have to look into that, so that's a good question as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Go ahead.
First, I apologize. I'm only looking at you over this computer screen. All you can really see is my eyes there. But I had, I had a question on Senate Bill 5770, the raising the cap on property tax. Seemed like it fell apart like really quickly and suddenly. So I didn't know if you had any details on that. And it all seemed like they left the door open to revisit it at a later point. So was there any lessons learned about how that kind of whole process went? And how it seemed like something that was being pushed really hard, then all of a sudden, just kind of fell apart?
Sure. So just for level settings, Senate Bill 5770 was the bill that addressed the current property tax percent of 1% that would allow it to go up to 3% depending on inflation. That, and it did have some momentum, and then it disappeared pretty quickly. I believe there was involvement from the executive that suggested that that was not something that the governor would sign this year. So even if the legislature passed it, it was likely to be vetoed. There was also conversation about a referendum clause. And I think, given the current ballot environment in next November with, with the six initiatives already on the ballot, I think there was a combination of all those factors that made it politically untenable even for the Senate Democratic Caucus.
Well, that's unfortunate, because what we're seeing is sales tax rates become extremely high. I mean, it's, you know, for 20-something years, they're basically flat. And then now, over the past, you know, decade, what we've seen, you know, even in our local area, they're pushing 10%. And that's the most regressive tax we have in our, in our state. But it's the easiest to, to pass because they think someone else is always paying it. Well, at the end of the day, we're all paying it because we all, we all consume. And so it's not, that's, you know, we need to figure out a better way to, to fund our governments. And, you know, our local governments and, and our, our counties, for sure. Our counties are just, are struggling. They're a, a major provider of services, obviously, for people, so. Okay. Anything else? Anything else from you guys?
Thank you, council.
Okay. Well, thank you. What about you, city manager? Anything left?
Nope.
Okay, then we're going to go on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first with the Transportation Policy Board that met last Wednesday, which was interesting because I was out of town. And so I was, had a Zoom in. And most importantly, I was having Zoom in because there was an election of officers. And I was up for to be Chair of the Transportation Policy Board again, and I obviously needed to be there. And I was elected to be Chair for, I think this is my 12th straight year of the Transportation Policy Board. And then Renee Radcliffe Sinclair is our Vice Chair, and Commissioner Foreign Air is our second Vice Chair. We then had a presentation from Puget Sound Energy to talk about our EV infrastructure and about, obviously, there is a huge push. And I'm sure this might have been discussed at TRPC as well, about how Puget Sound Energy is preparing for all the electrical vehicles that are, are coming to our state. And this is something that we obviously have already experienced during the, our cold, cold, you know, big, cold. When the temperatures dropped and PSE actually put out something and said, you know, we need to make sure we are, we are monitoring this because we have all these electric vehicles. And now everyone is heating their homes, of course, at night when it's really cold. We're using extra heat, and that's also usually the time where a lot of people are charging their vehicles. So this is all, all things PSE is having to think about as we're, we're making this transition to more electrical, electric vehicles. And, and this is obviously a big deal, right? This is something that we are thinking about here at the local level and thinking about, PSE is also thinking about. And they are finally starting to discuss some tiered level for charging as, as well, which is something that I think has been long overdue. You see this at, in other states, like in, you know, in, in California and other places where, where you're really wanting people to charge is when there's the least amount of usage on the grid, and that's usually at night. Right now, right with PSE, that's, it's a one-state charge. You get charged the same amount whenever you're using it. And so there's no incentive to be charging off-grid hours or off-peak hours. That, they're starting a, a pilot program, though, that is going to look at that. And I think that's something that's been long overdue. And so there is that, anyway, there's that presentation. And then the, most, most of the, the time was set up for new orientation for, for members, new members to the Transportation Policy Board to go over everything the Transportation Policy Board does and their role. And so that is my report. Onto the Deputy Mayor.
Just one quick report. Jazzcom met on the 12th. And like transportation, we did leadership roles. And Lisa Partially from the Olympia City Council will remain as Chair, and Peter Agabi from Tamara Council will remain as Vice Chair. There is a new Positive Outcomes Coordinator, Becca Cry, and she has instituted a couple of things that have been really helpful. The foster care program has increased 105% in her eight months in the, with Jazzcom. Transfer partners and transferring has increased by 77%. So a lot of times, animals are transferred from one care center to another. And this is over 22 and 23. There's a new day foster program launching, that launched on the 14th. It's only for Lacey employees and dog volunteers, so they can take a dog for the day because shelter can be traumatizing. There's also a foster mentorship program as part of the, this new Positive Outcomes Coordinator program. And, and in that program, that just kind of helps build the confidence of fosters. There is a unicorn foster program, which, we, we haven't found any unicorns. But large, large dogs are considered kind of a unicorn of the foster system. And so, and dogs with, you know, serious behavior problems. So, you know, you can, you can foster those. And then there's also the rehoming of those. In, in, in more financial part of the, of the meeting, we went over the 2023 review. There was a sewer repair that was $126,000. His kennel repairs were $290,000, I believe, for like nine kennels. So they are not cheap or inexpensive. Jazzcom was rated as one of our worst buildings in terms of need. Second worst, actually. It needs almost as much help as a police station. Let's see. Jazzcom, you know, is understaffed. And so consequently, some of the dollars that we put in are going to be coming back because they didn't get to use them up and they can't hold them. So there's going to be jurisdictional refunds that will be happening. The 2024 budget is 3.8 million, 3 million, 829 dollars, 3 million, 829,540 dollars. And shelter, shelter operations is 54% of that budget. I'll see. Animal intake increased 131% over 2022's numbers from the field team. And then surrenders went up by 20% in that same period of time. Negative outcomes went up a little bit consequently. Private contributions were up in 2023 by over $600,000. There was a, a large gift that happened, so that, that's really helpful to the clinic. And then one of the things that we discussed, one of the really good things that's happened is that TCOM is now doing better with the Jazzcom calls. So for, for a period of time there, if, if, if somebody called in and it went through TCOM, they may not get an answer on the other side because of how the system was structured. But now staffing is increased and there are, there, now that the, 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 there's five field officers and one supervisor, and TCOM is now routing those calls 24/7 to a live person. So there is no more, I didn't get ahold of somebody at Jazzcom. In terms of rehabbing or looking at new facilities, that, that work is going to be handed over to a company called Animal Arts. And that is their focus. That is their main thing. That's what they do. They, they build facilities for, for animals. And, and that is, I, I didn't know that there was an engineering or construction crew or people or entity that specialized in animal facilities. But I, I guess, you know, it makes all the sense in the world. And then, you know, so Jazzcom is, is going to be fully staffed now. And, you know, of course, Jazzcom moved to full service in 2022. And there was a 2023 audit, and there were no findings. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilor Greenstein?
Thank you. TCOM 911 met on February 7th. Just a few things. We went over the stats for 20, for 2023. So in 2023, they had 170,000 911 calls. Only 5% of them came from landlines. So tells you what's happening with home phones, right? People just don't have them anymore. That was about 9,000 more calls than the previous year. So the calls, volume is definitely going up. 80% of those calls were law enforcement, 16% were EMS, and 4% were fire. Keep in mind that the EMS and fire are really going to the same place because EMS is run by fire. But the call, the types of calls were more medical than they were fire, obviously. We also had an audit of our '22 and '23 finances, which passed with no, with no findings of any kind. And we did, we had an executive session to discuss the performance of our executive director, after which we came back to a regular session and awarded the director a 4% pay increase. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Thank you, Mayor. So ORCA met last week. We recognized an employee. I'm trying to blink right now. I don't want to type in my phone and go through all the things. But his last name's Moody. He worked there for 34 years. You know, it's a, he did anything for 25 to 30 years, let alone 34 years or 40 plus. It's, it's quite an accomplishment. So we thanked him for all he did for air quality in, in ORCA over the years. Out of 29 days in January of this new year, we had 27 to 29 good air quality days. And the one thing that jumped out to me was being a sheet metal worker and an exhaust expert, working in a nuclear lab and pharmaceuticals and dangerous stuff, you know, that you exhaust or, or have to filter or, or protect people. You know, safety's the number one thing because people will die. Little things like asbestos, you know, you see the lawsuits and, and stuff. And hundreds of thousands of people suffered terrible deaths and health, health crises over something as, as like that. Where, I mean, if you could keep it wet and, and dispose of it properly, it's, it's relatively harmless if you do it right. But you have to be properly trained and skilled and all that. I, I was, the one thing I took away from this meeting was all the asbestos permits. I mean, you know, in the days of our parents working in the, in the trades or, or if you're just even messing around with the ceiling tile or, or popcorn ceiling, or, you know, it's like lead in the paint, you know? Kids would chip it off and, and eat it and poison themselves. It's, it's really encouraging to see little things like this where, you know, an organization like ORCA, you know, it's just, it's getting the word out. It's educating people, and it's saving lives. That people do, go through the extra steps of getting a permit to protect themselves. Because, I mean, all it takes is one fiber. It's, it's in your lung, and you develop asbestos, asbestosis, and you, and it's terrible, you know? And it affects families, hundreds, thousands of people. So, you know, it's, it's a far-fetched from, you know, getting exposed to borilium and coming down to chronic borilium disease or hoot the virus or something crazy like that. But this is just as important because it's the little things that usually get people that they don't normally, aren't normally aware of. And so that is, you know, I wanted to give ORCA a huge thing with that because in the sheet metal industry, where I was a building trades sheet metal worker, that killed tens of thousands of sheet metal workers, let alone tradespeople, you know? Just the insulation wrap on a furnace in your house, you know? Telling the difference between a tile that's nine by nine and not 10 by 10. So the odd sizes are usually asbestos, and especially if the building or house was built before 1974. That, people just don't know it because they're not trained adequately, you know, adequately trained. And they didn't, not, not, most everybody didn't go through apprenticeship, apprenticeship program or whatever. So that was just hats off. Because, I mean, there was literally like 30 or 40 of them since the beginning of the year. And that's one month, you know what I mean? It's like, so, and they've been doing it for a while, and it saves lives. So if anyone takes anything out of my report from ORCA, it's little things like asbestos turn into big things if you don't treat them and handle them properly. So that basically is my report. But that, that was really encouraging because it's, it's just great that, that, that happens. Because a lot of times, people just discard it, you know?
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Cox?
Thank you. Before I begin my report, I'm really glad to see our Lacey librarian, Holly Paxton, here with us tonight. This past Wednesday, I had the honor of attending the Lacey Loves to Read VIP Awards. And it was just amazing, the quality of work that these kids did, both in art and poetry. And we also got to hear from this year's author, Donna Barbara Higuera, who is amazing. So it just, it was a great event. Thank you. And I've been handing out these bookmarks all over town, and people love them. So thank you all. It was just very well done, Holly, and I appreciate that.
I know. I was so upset. I, I missed it because I was out of town. It's one of the few times I've missed my Lacey Loves to Read. It's one of my favorite things to do, so, but it's so good. Sure. You can, if you want to come up.
Well, while we're waiting for Holly, I would say it was your 50th birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
That's a big one.
Thank you.
Anyone deserves to listen to me. It was a work session even.
Yeah, thank you.
When's your birthday, Mayor Rider?
It's actually tomorrow, or Thursday, Thursday, the 22nd, so.
I, I hit 50 last month, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to give a shout out to our youth librarian, Reyna Sador, because she has taken on the bulk of handling the Lacey
Reyna Sador, because she has taken on the bulk of handling the Lacey Loves to Read programming organization and details, including the VIP event and the teen writers contest. And she's just amazing. So just wanted to get a shout out on the record there for her. Thank you very much for indulging me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Okay, we'll, we'll run that one back to you.
So you want me to continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So InterCity Transit Authority met on February 20, February 7th. Probably most interest to our community is that they are now resuming all door boarding post COVID. There were plexiglass protective areas around the drivers, and those now are being removed because they feel like it's less of a health risk. And this should approve, improve the efficiency of boarding. Like Orca, we honored a very long term employee, Dave Rude, who retired after 42 years of service to the community. And, you know, in that time, he has taken thousands, if not millions, of people of all walks of life and ages to work, to school, to medical appointments, the grocery store, and other essential destinations. He started with InterCity Transit in 1982. We also honored the retirement of Eric Phillips. Many of you probably knew Eric. He was the InterCity Transit's Development Director, hired there in 2016. Eric worked on a lot of programs, including the Road Trip Program that actually led to start going to the Zero Fair Program. But that was a multi-year project and effort. There was some business, as usual, with approving a number of construction contracts. We discussed and identified performance measures for the general manager, as outlined in her employment contract. And we elected officers. Clark Gilman will return for another year as chair. And County Commissioner Carolina Mejia will be vice chair. So that's my report.
Okay. Councilmember Stedman, you have something else you want to add to your report?
Yeah, real quick. It was pretty substantial, almost a $2 million settlement with the Orca and Crown Corc Conceal Company, where they make aluminum cans. They did some work that wasn't permitted or certified correctly. It was a mutual thing. They worked together with the agency. But, you know, the, the, the underlining message here is that we take air quality cer, you know, seriously. You know, there's a plume that happened a couple, two, three decades ago that, you know, it's a serious business. And so it wasn't intentional. They worked together mutually to solve the issue, and everything's great, and they're up and running again.
Okay, that's good. Okay. Councilmember Vasquez.
I was just admiring the bookmarks. I, I think I missed the meeting where the bookmarks got handed out, and now I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were really, really amazing this year, that's for sure.
All right. I have two quick reports. The Board of Health meeting happened on February 13th, and we, one of the big news items is that we welcomed our tribal representative, long awaited, Ray Peters, from the Squawson Island Tribe, has been appointed to the Board of Health as the tribal representative. So that's a first. We continue to have firsts on the Board of Health because of the expansion. It's very exciting. We talked about the proclamation calendar and kind of engaging with the representatives on the Board of Health on which topics the Board of Health should have proclamations on, like which things do we want to uplift that matter to public health in the community. And some of the Board of Health members had just been appointed. That was essentially their first meeting. So I said, think about it, and then come back and we'll make a final decision on which proclamations we want to uplift at the next meeting. The other thing that we talked about is a strategic plan for the Board of Health, because we developed one that was supposed to be from, I think, 2019 to 2023. And that was, it was best laid plans. And then things got really weird in 2020. And so that strategic plan needed a refresh. So Jennifer Freihite from the county health department led us through like a blitz strategic plan process. And y'all participated in strategic plan processes. Sometimes it's a bit involved. But she was an excellent facilitator and kept us on track. And it was about a 45 minute discussion, and we developed the bones of most of the strategic plan right there with a whiteboard. So it was impressive. So soon we will have an updated Board of Health strategic plan that is intended to be just for two years. So not a lengthy four year thing, but something that we will refresh more often. We also had a Board of Health orientation, which was about a, a five hour orientation, where both the current members of the board and the new board members got to go to the Board of Health and receive presentations from all, I don't even know how many different sections within the Board of Health and Social Services, but maybe like 12 or 13 different sections. Because public health does a lot of different things in Thurston County, from providing, you know, support for mothers that are struggling with breastfeeding, to making sure that the water is clean, to, you know, figuring out whether or not there are communicable diseases breaking out, to providing support for individuals with intellectual disabilities, to find jobs. It was a whirlwind. Like, I was tired at the end from receiving all that information, but encouraged because we do so much good work. And it was a good, again, sort of run through of all the different things that the Board of Health does. And our next meeting is on, in March, and we'll be talking more about the strategic plan and the proclamations and some other stuff. TRPC will meet on March 1st, which is this coming Friday. And we'll be taking a look at the Growth Management Act Housing Needs Allocation Plan that we've reviewed here. We'll also get an update from Michael Cade on the Pacific Salish Economic Development District that is in the works because we're, we're big enough now. We can have our own economic development district, and that's very exciting, and present some opportunities. And we'll be updating our regional transportation plan with some climate updates and recognizing Clark Gilman because he's stepping away from the board after four years of good service. I also attended the Switches On event. So for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, is the new name, got to remember the letters, they're participating in the Switches On campaign, which is intended to create a website and kind of a one stop shop for all the different energy efficiency subsidies and resources that are out there. We've had this conversation here, too. There's all these, like, there's money out there. There's grants, there's incentives, there's, you know, subsidies and all kinds of stuff for upgrading the energy efficiency of your appliances in your house. Well, the Switches On campaign intends to make it really easy for people to find all those different things that are out there by putting them in one place and providing consultation with folks so that they can find the energy efficiency upgrades that are good for them. The campaign kickoff was at the Ole, Ole, Loc Ole is what it's called, Loc Ole. It's a commercial kitchen that's at the mall, right next to the movie theater. And we did a demo of the induction stoves. And if anybody's seen a demo of an induction stove, it's really neat because they're very energy efficient. They heat up water, they heat up a pan extremely quickly. And the person who was doing the presentation was a commercial cook, like a, a big time, had worked in very high end kitchens and was totally sold on these induction ovens that were so efficient. And they don't heat up your kitchen. So sometimes in the summer, you might not want to cook. But an induction oven doesn't make your whole kitchen hot. It just heats up the food. So she was very effusive in her, like, encouraging us to think about induction ovens. But it was the kickoff for that campaign. And the website is theswitcheson.org. So folks listening at home may want to check that website out because there will be more information about local incentives and local opportunities in the future. And that is all of my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dunning.
All right. The Solid Waste met on February 7th. Just a lot of updates on, on projects going on. So the solar land lease proposal behind Thurston County landfill, status, kind of update on that. So if, if it wasn't reported already, the, it was awarded to EDF Renewables, which has a lot of experience in these exact type of projects. And that's the reason they went with them. So the last quarter of 2023, both sides lawyers were really just trying to hash out a short term agreement. Now the staff is reviewing that in, in hopes of then, once a short term agreement is signed, move to work on a long term agreement, but at least get the project going. So hopefully we have another update on that at the next, the next meeting. The SCADA system was, project was completed late last year. The flare system was also completed. And then the pump system was delayed a few months because of parts shortages. So that's going to be probably second quarter of this year when that project gets completed. The Visitors Bureau met earlier today. The biggest thing that, that we talked about was trying to handle events. They want to do events. The EDC has taken over a lot of doing, doing events. They have more resources for that. So they're really going to try to work on, trying to figure out not only how they can make events profitable, staff the events, and have the experience to put them on, which they just frankly don't have right now. But it was clear that every city and every stakeholder wants more events in Thurston County. So hopefully there can be some, you know, working together with the EDC with that as well, too. They just completed their 2024 business and marketing plan. So that was released. We went over that today. And they're finalizing their destination master plan. It's a lot of information. So I suggested that they try to schedule a meeting with us during a work session to be able to go over that. And we also went over the website. That was one of the reasons why I think we should also, you know, try to meet with them, because I think we need to do a little bit of advocacy for the city of Lacey. I'm going to read the, the top website hits from Experience Olympia. Events in Olympia, Olympia area events, best things to do in Olympia, the best restaurants in Olympia, Ole on Ice, seven best views around of Mount Rainier, best brunch spots in Olympia, top six date night ideas in Olympia, ultimate guide to Olympia downtown. So it's obvious, and not to say Olympia's not great because they got a lot of great things, but I think we just need to do a lot of advocacy and making sure that we're promoted on, on those resources as well, and our city is, is highlighted on that. And I think that's something that we should really promote and push with the Visitors Bureau. So.
Thank you. Thank you for that. That has been a longtime concern, going back forever and ever and ever, right? And it was the concern that we had when they changed their name to Olympia and Beyond. It's like, so what, we're, we're the beyond? But, but I appreciate you bringing, bringing that up. And I do understand the importance of, of what they're trying to do. But there was some reassurance that we weren't going to be lost in the shuffle. But that sounds like we're a little lost in, in the shuffle at the moment. So.
My initial impressions definitely feel that way. And that's something that, you know, I will take, take on before and meet with them and really just at least lay out like, hey, this is, this is just what the data says. So, yeah, I definitely think hopefully we can write some of those, you know, past issues and, and I'll, you know, crusade for that if I have to.
Thank you. So with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. I, yep.
The name I searched for was Robert Moody. And I could only think of Debbie Moody. She works there, too. But it was kind of a little bit of a homecoming reunion thing because I served on the West Park Owners Business Association out there. And we met, we had our meetings in the Orca boardroom. And I knew half the people, of course, you know. So I just wanted to do them justice to get it, you know?
Absolutely. So we have reached the end of our agenda. But I, I do want to bring this one thing up, that obviously we've went to, we've, we're in the second month of a, of a new system of no longer having committees, right? And I could tell tonight was a pretty lean agenda. I did have a conversation with our city manager about that. And I, I think the, the most important thing I want to try to figure out is when the council member emerging issues, all right, where we have an opportunity if, when something we think is important, we need to sort of talk about. We always sort of were able to do that through our, our committee assignments, right? It was three of us, you know, three of us, you a lot of times talk about, sometimes you're sitting around and you was like, oh, what about this? And that's how sort of ideas kind of went forward. I want to make sure that in our new system, we don't lose, lose that opportunities for us to talk about issues that we care about and making sure they're, they're addressed. So that, that's one thing. But another thing is, is I just want to make sure that all the information that we were getting through the committees is, is still coming through us. And, and, you know, we're working that out. I think that's, I think we're getting there. I think we're, I, I just wanted to have that conversation. I just had the conversation with our city manager earlier today. I've talked to the deputy mayor about it. And the city manager is aware. And I think we're working on it, making sure everything's confused, and, and we're, we're still getting the same information. And I just wanted to bring this up to council in case you were wondering about that as well. We've had a couple light council meetings. And I just want to make sure we're not, nothing gets lost and as we're in this new system. And so I just wanted to let you all know that I'm thinking about that. And I want to make sure that, you know, we, we go, go forward smoothly. So.
Maybe at our work sessions, we could have a standing good of the order kind of part of the meeting where we can bring things up that we want to.
Yes, I agree. Let's, let's, since I threw it out there, let's think about that. Think about, you know, what's the best way we can make sure we're all still gaining the same information? And let's talk about that at upcoming work session. We, instead of just us discussing, I want to make sure the whole council is involved in that discussion. Okay? Okay. With that, we have reached the end of our agenda. So without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.